Welcome to the West Virginia Legislature on the West Virginia Channel. Good morning, I'm Beth Forhees. This morning, a public hearing on House Bill 4002 to provide for a sunset of administrative rules under the State Administrative Procedures Act. Rules are subject to sunset five years after the effective date of this bill and five years after the effective date of all new or modified rules. These are rules that state agencies write to implement legislation that's been passed. Republicans have complained for years that state agencies have too many rules and these rules should be reviewed from time to time. This bill would allow every existing and future rule and regulation in state government to expire in five years unless sooner continued, amended, or repealed. The House Judiciary Committee is holding this public hearing. Its chair is Delegate John Schott of Mercer County. We don't know how long this public hearing will last. The House doesn't appear to be very full. People have signed up to speak to this bill, but there doesn't seem to be very many people who want to speak. So we have no idea how long this public hearing will last, but you will see it live here on the West Virginia Channel. Again, we're waiting on the start of a public hearing on House Bill 4002. The bill would allow every existing and future rule and regulation in state government to expire in five years unless sooner continued, amended, or repealed. We're waiting for the public hearing to be called to order by House Judiciary Chairman, Delegate John Schott.
Good morning. Would you please take your seats? We'll begin just in a moment. We only have two speakers signed up, so we'll allow a few more minutes if anyone came in late and wants to sign up to speak either for or against the proposed legislation. Good morning. We'll call this public hearing to order. This is a public hearing to consider committee substitute for House Bill 4002, which relates to rulemaking under the State Administrative Procedures Act and providing sunset rules under certain circumstances. I should remind you all that we are streaming both audio and video, so please act appropriately. We have only three speakers signed up today, and we will alternate between pro and con. It works out perfectly. We have two con and one pro. Should remind you that copies of the legislation as proposed, as well as the committee substitute that was adopted by the committee, are on the table up here. And if you have written materials that you wish to supplement any oral comments you make, please file them with the clerk, who is either on my left or my right, either will When one person is speaking, we will call the next speaker to be available. Because we only have three speakers, we're going to allow you about 10 minutes, and we will try to enforce that with some flexibility. But what we'd like to do is allow a little bit of time at the end of the session for questions from our committee members. We ask that you please refrain from any personal comments which you make about individuals and be courteous in your presentation, and we will not permit any displays of approval or disapproval, such as applause and so forth. We ask the speakers to please remain in the room after you've spoken, in case there are questions, and to allow our committee members an opportunity and the other members of the legislature to ask any questions. Do we have another one? All right. And just to remind those of you who weren't in the committee meeting in which this legislation was considered, the committee did not adopt the original bill as proposed, but instead a committee substitute. So if you haven't seen the committee substitute, it's substantially different than the bill as it was originally proposed. So you may want to look at the committee substitute before you make your comments, otherwise they may not be on target. Our first speaker today will be Betty Rivera. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Is it Rivard or Rivera? Rivard. Miss Rivard, please come forward. Keep an eye on the red light. When that comes on, that indicates your time is up, and please wrap up your comments after that. Thank you. You can say it three times if you want to. Go ahead and start over.
My name is Betty Rivard, and I'm here as an independent citizen advocate on issues that I care about. I just discovered this issue when I was going over the schedule for today, and fortunately was able to look into it pretty quickly with a lot of help. My background is that I worked for DHHR for 25 years, retired in 1999, and worked for the legislature for six out of the last nine years as per diem assistant. I was an assistant in the office of the Rulemaking Review Chair for three years during the session and interims. I maintained about five feet of files for each year's rules for the current year and the past year. I was involved mostly as a mouse in the corner in countless conversations and debates about rules. And so I learned a lot about rulemaking review from where I sat. I wasn't involved in the nitty-gritty, and I was rarely involved in the content. So based on that experience, also DHHR, the part of DHHR I was in was not required to submit rules, except in one situation where I was involved in submitting emergency rules related to childcare. So I didn't have experience from the regulatory side. So there's five points I want to make. The first is that as far as I know, in my last experience, the current system works, and it gives stability to businesses and to citizens. And that's really important. It also gives flexibility to change rules without sort of needing to resunset them or go back through all of the process that would be required through this, if I understand this committee substitute correctly. It seems to me that if there are issues with the system, they're more like tweaks, and they can be built into individual bills and rules. And that might take a fight over whether there should be a sunset provision and how long it should be, but in my mind, it's better to have that fight at the beginning than replay it over and over. I think a blanket sunset provision, even if it's only for new rules or changes as they come up, would clog up the system so that instead of five feet of files, you might have 10 feet, which could mean a lot more work by a lot more people. It could take a lot of time and money. And it leaves, to me, the bigger issue is that it leaves things open to refighting intractable battles. And anyone who's been around for a while knows about the battles that involve the beauticians and the optometrists. And I mean, they were just grueling and took a whole lot of time and energy of a whole lot of people. And I don't think those are the kinds of regulations that really you or the voters care a lot about, but they do matter to the people that are directly affected. There's also the chance that rules, for instance, those needed for federal mandates could fall through the cracks. And that's a real danger and could affect funding for the state. And I don't like to speak against something or bring up a problem without pointing to a solution. And I think what this gets at is accountability, and accountability is a value that I think everyone has, and it's really important. I think if the legislature really wants to get a handle on accountability in state government, the answer is to establish a permanent fiscal office and use that office to analyze and cost out legislation and rules. That's a system that seems really broken to me, and I've been on all sides of that system, too, having to submit fiscal notes from DHHR and trying to understand the ones that are submitted and their relation to reality. I just feel very strongly that if there's going to be a lot more time and energy put into accountability, that's where it needs to go. I'm available for questions afterwards, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Our next speaker is Vicki Wolf, and she will be followed by Chris Hamilton. Ms. Wolf?
Good morning. I'll start by stating the obvious, which is first that rules are passed to implement legislation that's passed by this body, and second, that this body has the ability not only to approve or disapprove those rules, but also to change them when they come to you for approval. So this legislation is unnecessary from that point of view. Secondly, you're shooting yourself in the foot because you may end up liking the new rule that gets passed even less than you liked the old one. Thirdly, as Betty said, this makes a less stable environment for business if regulations are going to expire automatically at the end of five years. And then finally, obviously, the salaries of legislators and other state employees are paid by taxpayers. And as Betty also pointed out, this is going to create more work and unnecessary work for yourselves and for agency employees at a time when the state can't afford to hire new agency employees. I don't want my tax dollars to be spent on rewriting rules unnecessarily, and I want the legislature to focus on solving real problems, of which the fact that agency rules don't have an automatic sunset isn't one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Chris Hamilton, followed by Dave McMahon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Chris Hamilton with the West Virginia Coal Association, also with the West Virginia Business and Industry Council. As evidenced by your actions to date, this particular legislature appears to be determined to reduce the regulatory burden that is placed on state businesses here in West Virginia, an action which we not only applaud, but encourage. The Forbes citing of our state as the worst in this regard alone should drive our shared motivation to try to tweak and fix the system that we have. The coal industry is a prime example of where overregulation, extreme regulation, antiquated and costly inconsistent regulation impacts our businesses in a very negative fashion. Practically every single activity is governed by a state rule and a federal rule, and in many instances, the two are inconsistent. And in most instances, the state rule is overly onerous, antiquated, complicating without a commensurate improved level of a commensurate improved level of mine safety or environmental quality. As you well know, our industry is on the brink of collapse, and we need your assistance to survive. We need tax reform and regulatory reform, and we need them today. Most state businesses, like coal, are struggling today like no other time, and meaningful regulatory reform is an important undertaking to ensure that existing state businesses can compete in domestic and world markets. We must become more viable and competitive, and if we are to grow and to sustain our economy, we must make major changes within our regulatory review process. I have been around state government, the legislature, been lobbying for over 25 years. I also happen to work in one of the state's leading industries and perhaps the most regulated industry. I participate on several regulatory processes as a representative of industry, as an official board member. I serve on the West Virginia Board of Coal Mine Health and Safety, which for all intent and purposes has been delegated the regulatory and legislative function of state government over the coal industry. Staff lawyers, agency and division directors come and go. It is almost, well, it is common, but it is so regular that we experience a regulatory activity in action of the legislature that has happened previously within our business. My input, my advice, is solicited frequently, almost with every meeting that we have, because of a similar regulatory action that occurred five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago. Almost without exception, meeting after meeting, as we are pursuing a new regulation, a new rule, a new requirement, I will observe that in 1995, or in 2002, or in 2007, the legislature or one of the other administrative entities with rulemaking powers attempted to regulate the same precise issue. And here's what they opted to do. And with just a little bit of research, we find that that's true, and what's being attempted today is either inconsistent, totally incongruous, and further complicates the issue. I personally believe, and our, both the Business and Industry Council, the Coal Association believes, that a sunset is not only the prudent thing to do, but is absolutely critical. So it will require those charged with administering the law, those charged with considering new rule and regulation, a constant personal intimate awareness of the body of law that they are personally charged with implementing or enforcing. It only makes sense that there's a periodic checkpoint for not just new regulators, new directors, new staff lawyers, but also those that remain in office that have this responsibility in an ongoing fashion, so that they become aware of the rules, the regulations, the requirements that they're charged with enforcing, and so that they can also, on a regular basis, observe sections of law, state rules, that should be updated or revised because of new technological advancements that have been implemented within that particular discipline or profession, or so that they can become aware of new research developments that ought to be considered for inclusion within their body of law. We should also strive continuously, in my view, to conform this body of state law to a corresponding body of federal law, which I believe everybody, particularly within the mining business, would observe and quickly agree is superior in most instances, is more comprehensive, more cogent, more sequentially laid out for the enforcement activities, as well as those charged by state law, to enforce and comply with the various standards. Again, as it relates specifically to coal, we have two bodies of law addressing the same subject matter or topic from cover to cover. And it's a rare instance when the two are identical. In a large number of instances, there are slight deviations, which the core of lawyers we have involved today will absolutely insist that those differences were there for some rational basis, were intended to be different, to produce a different result, when in fact they usually are not. But again, when you put two lawyers in a situation where one's arguing for and one against, they typically come up with a different conclusion. Again, we support your actions to date. We support this legislation before us, and we look forward, working with you over the coming weeks, to come up with a good, workable system for many, many rules that we have here within the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. David McMahon?
My name is David McMahon. I'm an attorney. I have lobby for low-income people, and I've been doing it even longer than Chris Hamilton. In fact, I've been doing it since before the current rulemaking statute was in place. And when I hear that we have more rules perhaps in other states, there's a reason for that because we are the only state in which administrative rulemaking gets reviewed by the legislature before it takes effect. Therefore, as I saw before this rulemaking system started and after, this legislature, and because you've only got 60 days, tends to leave a lot more detail to the agency. Other states, because they want to direct the agencies more, the statutes will be much more focused, much more detailed. Instead, this legislature leaves the details to the agency to work out because the legislature knows it'll review them on the way back. So I don't buy the fact that we are more regulated than other states. I have been doing this for, 83, I think, is when I started. I have worked on rulemaking processes for domestic violence that changes the behavior of police officers approaching domestic violence situations, which has probably saved lives. I've done rulemaking on rent-to-own, consumer protection stuff that protects consumers from being overwhelmed by more, by industry. And of course, I've done oil and gas rules and regs. So I've been around, been around, and I know, I understand the rulemaking process. I am concerned, because this is not really a sunset bill the way that we sunset agencies. When we sunset agencies, we review the agency and decide whether to continue it. It's not what this bill does. This bill says after five years for new rules, the rule is gone. So what if one falls through the cracks? What if one of those on domestic violence or oil and gas? It's a dangerous thing to happen, I think. Also, there are some statutes that require, many of them, require rulemaking. What happens if a statute requires rulemaking and the rule disappears? What does that mean? Out of compliance with something. I do applaud the effort of the co-chairs of the Rulemaking Review Committee that sent letters to the agencies and said, "Please look through, and if you've got any that are no longer necessary, let's do away with them. Great." I think that's the way the process should be done. If you have a statute to do that, I wouldn't complain so much. The legislature's energy is limited. I would prefer you spend it on more urgent needs than those. If there's a problem with a rule, I'm pretty sure Mr. Hamilton and others wanted to change a rule, can come back here and do it and ask for it to be changed, or pass a statute that changes it. If it ain't, otherwise, if it ain't broke, let's not go around fixing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon. That concludes our presenters today. Do any members of the committee or our other legislators here today have any questions for our five speakers? Yes. Delegate? If you'll identify the speaker you wish to address, we'll ask him to return to the podium. Delegate Schaefer.
Can you use the other mic, the one next to it? The one next to you? Apparently, that one's not working. Mr. Hamilton, you're from the Coal Association, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're telling me that the state coal mines are overregulated? Is that correct?
Telling you what, sir? I'm sorry.
You're telling us that the state coal mines is overregulated by the legislature and the committee that puts together rules and regulations?
You know, the real point, I think, that I made there, or attempted to make, perhaps not very well, was that there's a great deal of inconsistency between state and federal rules. I personally would allege that there are areas overly regulated as well. Now, I did not say that that was a good thing or a bad thing. What I was attempting to say, once again, that there is an absolute critical need that in all these areas where there's inconsistency, and in all these areas where there is possible overregulation, that they require the frequent review and consideration of whether changes ought to be made, doesn't mean that all need to be eliminated. It simply means that they should receive periodic, frequent review.
All right. You would agree with me that coal mines are safer place to work in today than they were 25 years ago?
Without question. In fact, we just, we just now recorded this in 2015, the safest year in the history of our state.
Yes. I believe there was only two fatalities in 2015. Is that correct?
As well as a substantial decrease of lost time accidents, lost time incident rates, and a much greater amount of tonnage being mined per accident. Yes, sir.
And you would agree that the reason we've reduced the number of accidents and the number of fatalities is because of the rules and regulations placed on coal miners and on coal companies?
I would say it's a multitude of factors. I would say yes to your basic question, that there is a threshold of regulation that's positive and that's been good for the industry. I would think the maturity and experience factor of our miners today, which have 25, 30 years, they're true journeyman-level professionals, has had a lot to do with it. The imposition of new mining technologies has made just a major difference in the overall safety conditions, the safety improvement record of the coal industry.
Well, and I have 23 years' experience in the coal mines. You know, most of that is a certified foreman. I'm a certified mine foreman in West Virginia and also in Pennsylvania. And to me, the workforce that we have today in West Virginia coal mines, and when I started in 1975, 1975, it was hard, very seldom did you see young people in the coal mines. Most of them were older gentlemen. So I think experience back then was probably greater than it is today. But I think that the technology and the rulemaking that has been in place, and the reason rules are made is because of accidents in the past. You would agree?
Excuse me, delegate. Please limit your comments to a question.
All right.
And in a lot of instances, yes, sir.
You know, if there's an explosion at a coal mine because of methane, then rules are promulgated to address that issue. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
If there's methane explosions, then the amount of rock dust required in the intakes and returns would be greater in the new rules. Is that correct?
That's a possibility, if in fact the accident was attributed somehow to a lack or low percentage of rock dust. Rock dust in and of itself does not prevent accidents or explosions. It prevents explosions, once you have an ignition, from propagating into a much larger event.
All right. And last question is, you've stated that there's a great inconsistency between the state rules and regulations and federal rules. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Don't you think the people that has made those rules would be better suited to look at those rules and look at the federal rules than the legislature, because we don't have the federal rules in front of us?
I couldn't agree more with that. In fact, the legislature, upon creating our State Board of Coal Mine Health and Safety in 1977, made the observation that it's absolutely critical that this body of law be reviewed periodically and updated as deemed appropriate as new technologies are introduced into the workplace and as the conditions generally improve. The problem is that frequent review never takes place on its own. And that's why this legislature has been asked to look at mine safety provisions, which in some ways is unfair, should belong in the hands of the experts, because the experts have refused to do the job as compelled by this legislature.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Delegate Flash Hour?
Let's stay on Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Hamilton, would you agree that most regulations that we have relating to whole coal mine self and health, coal mine health and safety have arisen out of accidents?
Yes, I would agree that the large number have, yes.
And we've had accidents in our state for hundreds of years. We've had lots and lots of mines blow up. For, in my area, in Montegalia and Marion County, we had them in 1906, 1907, 1908. We had them in the 20s when Federal Number Three exploded. We have accidents of miners who get killed one by one. And we don't just have explosions, we have people dying from black lung. You would agree with that?
That's correct.
And wouldn't you also agree there's been a whole lot of cheating going on with relating to testing for black lung? We know that that has happened in more than one mine. Isn't that true?
I can't speak for all the workers.
I didn't ask you that. I said, "We know that cheating is taking place with respect to testing for dust in the mines."
I can't speak for all workers.
I didn't ask you to speak for all workers. You're not a worker.
Let him finish his question, please, before you interrupt him again.
However, but every single worker has the responsibility to ensure that the Mine Safety Act is carried out. A number of individual workers have individual responsibilities as it relates to wearing a dust respirator, as it relates to overseeing and participating in the chain of custody for those cassette tapes and other measurements that are properly sealed and submitted for evaluation. Again, I cannot speak for every single miner, but every single miner has a responsibility for participating and having oversight in that process.
I agree with you. And I agree that the coal industry has put food on the table for a lot of families. But there are also a lot of families that have a plate at the table and nobody's sitting there. And would you agree that a lot of coal miners are veterans?
Yes.
And they have learned the chain of command in the military, correct?
That's correct.
And when they are ordered to hang up that dust sample, they follow orders in order to keep their job. Some of them have done that, in order to keep their job and put food on the table for the family.
I absolutely disagree with your characterization of the working miner. I was a working miner. I have working miners in my family. They're There are a large number that are veterans. They're also a very hard-nosed, tough individual. The miners that I know, first of all, as you well know, there is not another industrial worker anywhere in the world that has the protections that working miners do. They can personally refuse to work in any area that they believe in good faith, don't even have to have hard evidence, that they believe in good faith is unsafe. They have the ability under law and all the protections that go with it from discrimination that if anyone directs them to do something unsafe, they can refuse to do that as well. And the miners that I know, the majority of miners who work today are journeyman-level professionals that would never, ever, ever allow another human being to order them to do something unsafe.
But don't you think...
They're not that frail or weak of a person.
Oh, I never suggested that, and you know...
They're incredibly strong, strong-willed, and they know the law because the law is required to be given to them, not only annually, but periodically. They receive training, education, personal contact over what their personal rights and responsibilities are under the Mine Safety Act.
Right. Now, you paid attention to the Upper Big Branch trial, didn't you?
Yes.
And you know that people testified that they were ordered to do things and that they did them because they were worried about their jobs, correct?
I heard some of that, yes.
You heard sworn testimony that people were ordered not to, they were ordered to, several different violations of safety laws and that they felt that was the only way to keep their job.
What we didn't hear was questions why you did not exercise your state, your federal rights and responsibilities as a miner to either remove yourself from an unsafe place, call for an immediate inspection of an alleged unsafe act, which nobody is allowed under law to interfere with or discriminate against.
Mr. Blankenship's attorneys could have cross-examined those people, but they didn't do that, did they? On those issues that you're citing?
I am not personally, and I would question the appropriateness of bringing aspects of that trial, which is still open, I believe, into this proceeding.
Well, one of the reasons that is so important is because the owners and the people in responsibility did not exercise their authority. There's 29 people killed, and the only thing that comes out of that is a misdemeanor. Don't you think we should be focusing our responsibility on making sure that the safety requirements that we have in place are actually obeyed and followed?
I think your questions and assertions here this morning are way out of line. I didn't think that any of this was the topic of today's hearing. I'm glad to sit down and talk to you, all you wish, about what I know about that trial. But I will again repeat that every single miner has the responsibility and authority under state and federal law, so much more than any other industrial worker has, to call for an immediate inspection, to remove themselves from a perceived unsafe place, to refuse to do something that they believe is unsafe, unlawful, or inappropriate that any person in a supervisory position would direct them to do.
Do you think that the fam...
Excuse me, delegate, let me let some other people ask questions and I'll return to you if we have time.
I would be happy to.
And I believe Delegate Fast has a question. And let me just remind those here that our focus is on this particular piece of legislation. Questions should be relevant to this legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions are for Mr. Hamilton as well. Mr. Hamilton, this includes not only the coal industry, but also your other members of the Business and Industry Council. Is there a list of regulations that either or both has promulgated that you believe that are unnecessary under today's working environment? And I'm sure we're talking more about safety regulations, but various regulations. Is there a list that you believe that are unnecessary? And if there is not, would your organizations be able to put together a list for the legislature to consider?
We have compiled examples. I can provide that to you or the committee. There are a number of rules, and I'll use the term, that are inconsistent. And I would not stand here and say that every rule that's inconsistent, every state rule that's superior to a federal corresponding rule is inappropriate. I would not say that. But I would encourage you, the legislature bodies that have rulemaking responsibility, to review those rules that are inconsistent. It may very well be that there's a rational basis and there should be some inconsistencies. It may very well be that there's a state rule that's superior to a corresponding federal rule that should remain in place.
I would very much like to see that information. And I would also strongly invite especially the Business and Industry Council to put together a thorough list because those businesses are the ones in the front lines. They're the ones that have to abide by what may otherwise, in today's workforce, be an unreasonable or ridiculous rule. And so that feedback, what I think would be invaluable to the legislature because, as you know, generations have come and gone and those rules have just remained on the books. But those businesses out there in the front lines are the ones having to follow those still. So that would be invaluable. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Are there other questions before I return to Delegate Flash Hour? Other questions of committee members? Delegate Flash Hour.
Mr. Hamilton, you talked about the inconsistencies. And you also mentioned the 1977 Coal Mine Health and Safety Act. Now, which explosion was that, that it followed? The one in Marion County? Which of the two big ones in Marion County was that?
Neither.
Oh, okay. Well, there were two big ones, and that did motivate people. Or do you think that was mostly concern about black lung?
Neither.
Okay. Well, that happened 40 years ago. And after that, we have continued to have deaths in the coal mine. We've continued to have people suffering from black lung. Don't you think it's possible that one of the reasons there are inconsistencies is that we have worse accident and black lung rates than other states? And we, the legislature, are trying to get it right. We are trying to save lives and help people live healthier lives. Don't you think that might be why sometimes our laws are stricter?
Could very well be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Are there further questions for either Mr. Hamilton or the other three speakers? Seeing none, thank all of you for your participation.
Thank you.
And we are adjourned.
You've been tuned to a public hearing on House Bill 4002 to provide for a sunset of administrative rules under the State Administrative Procedures Act. To read this bill and the committee substitute, go to the West Virginia Legislature's website. We will be back at 11:00 with live coverage of the floor sessions of the House and Senate. And this program reminder, beginning today, The Legislature Today, our nightly broadcast of legislative news and information airs at 6:30 and 11:30 every weeknight on West Virginia PBS. The season premiere is this evening. The Legislature Today will be repeated weeknights at 10:00 and weekday mornings at 6:30 here on the West Virginia Channel. I'm Beth Voorhees, reporting for the West Virginia Channel. We'll see you at 11:00.